I am welcoming everyone again to the city of Iowa City, City Council meeting for October 6, 2020. And we're going to start with roll call, please.
Burgess.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Sully.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome everyone. Fall is here. If you haven't noticed, sweaters are out and people are definitely having, enjoying the last real sunny days here in our community. But there's a lot to continue to enjoy while we get into the fall season and seeing the trees change colors. So hope people do enjoy the changing of the seasons here in Iowa City. All right, we're going to start with item number two, Proclamations, and this is 2A, and this is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence, data violence, and stalking affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children who experience domestic violence are at a high risk for failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life. And whereas domestic violence in rural communities exist as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized crime that is often underreported, and whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and in intimate relationships. And whereas the Domestic Violence Intervention Program has worked to end violence and intimate relationships for more than 40 years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders, and private citizens. And whereas our community's achievements should be commended, and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victim of domestic violence and to prevent future violence in our community. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, here do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Iowa City, Iowa, and urge all citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, data and violence, and stalking from our community. Here to accept this as Alta, my dear Peters, this proclamation today.
Hi, yes, this is Alta. I've got a small two and a half year old here helping me this evening. So if you hear him chime in, that's walking. I first just wanted to thank the council and the community of Iowa City and surrounding areas for all of the amazing support that we've had over the last 41 years. This is where we started and certainly have helped to support us and keep us going all of this time. I also just wanted to mention some brief statistics. In the past year, we have served over 1,800 individuals, which is pretty on par with where we were last year. Just about 100 off, and that's pretty remarkable considering the fact that we have been, for three of those months, we were essentially shut down. Once the state started to open in early May due to COVID closures, in early May, we did see a 28% increase in our hotline calls, which is a big jump. And we are grateful to be able to serve those in need that have been isolated and are sort of quarantined with their abuser. Our services are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they are free and confidential to anyone in need and accessible by calling 800-373-1043. In Iowa City alone, we helped 700 individuals. And so we are grateful for your support. And the last sort of number I've been sharing as I've been doing these proclamations across our service region is that we have had a 96% of our clients have reported that they feel safer because of the work of our advocates. And to me, that is a number that is just absolutely wonderful to share. It speaks to the skills that our advocates have in problem solving and safety planning, as well as the, yeah, just the work of the victim survivors and reaching out and getting resources they need. So I wanted to open it up to answer any questions that you all might have for us at this time.
And then I speak on behalf of the council, and we say thank you for all the work that you all are doing. Thank you so much.
It is our pleasure. I know you've heard a lot from Kristi Fortman, those are executive director lately too. So we just really appreciate the time that the council has taken to speak with us and understand the needs of victim survivors. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Item 2B is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city of Iowa City recognizes that the indigenous people of the lands, which will later become known as the Americans, have occupied these lands since their memorial and continue to play a vital role in the development of local communities and the nation. And whereas the city recognizes the fact that Iowa City is built upon the homelands and villages of indigenous people of this region, without whom the building of the city would not have been possible. And whereas the city is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards indigenous people, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, and exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Peoples, a population in the Americas. And whereas the city strongly supports that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous people of the region. And whereas the city encourages all residents to acknowledge the historic sacrifices of indigenous people and recognize their contributions to the emergence and development of the city, the state, the nation, the free world, and the global economy. And whereas the city strongly encourages schools to include the teaching of indigenous people's history in its curriculum and encourages other businesses, organizations, and institutions to recognize Indigenous People Day. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim October 12, 2020 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Iowa City. And to accept this proclamation today is Joe Coulter. Welcome, Joe.
Mi'kmaq. Thank you in my native language. I appreciate very much Mayor Teague and the City Council for this proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. We will actually celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on October the 12th, which is next Monday. I would also like to say that your proclamation very much is an acknowledgement of the indigenous people, the native people who are here in Iowa. Even the state itself is named after the Iowa tribe or nation. So I am very appreciative of this opportunity to speak with you and want to say in my Potawatomi language, getcha mi'kmaq. Great, thanks.
Thank you, Joe. And item 2C is LGBTQ History Month. Whereas in 1994, Rodney Wilson, a Missouri high school teacher and the first openly gay public school teacher in Missouri, believed a month should be dedicated to the celebration and teaching of gay and lesbian history and gathered other teachers and community leaders. They selected October because public schools are in session in existing traditions, such as Coming Out Day and the First and Second LGBT Marches on Washington, where are in October. And whereas LGBTQ History Month has been endorsed by GLAD, the Human Rights Campaign, the National Gay and Lesbian Task Force, the National Education Association, and other national organizations. And 2006 Equality Forum assumed the responsibility for providing content, promotion, and resources for LGBTQ History Month. And whereas LGBTQ History Month is an annual month-long observation of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender history, and the history of the gay rights and related civic rights movement. The LGBT community is the only community worldwide that is not taught its history at home in public schools or in religious institutions. LGBTQ History Month provides roles, role models, builds community, and makes the civil rights statement about the extraordinary national and international contributions of LGBTQ persons. And whereas this past Thursday marked the beginning of the 26th Annual Celebration of LGBTQ History Month, a time dedicated to recognize an important moment in the history of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. This October is set to remind both LGBTQ and wider communities of the important roles LGBTQ people have taken in creating the social, legal, and political worlds we live in today. Iowa City Pride and the Iowa City Human Rights Commission encourages all community members to use this opportunity to explore the place of LGBTQ people in society and the change they are making in their communities. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as LGBTQ History Month in Iowa City. And accepting this proclamation is my good friend, Tony, who is our current Chair of the Iowa City Pride. Welcome, Tony.
Thank you, guys. I just want to thank the city, council, Human Rights Campaign for reaching, or Commission for reaching out to us about this. This is a very important month, a very important time right now, especially with the pandemic and not having our annual Pride Festival or March. And with certain rights currently being possibly taken away. So I think now is a great time to really honor the history and honor the people who paved the way for us to continue this fight. So I'm really excited to show you guys what we have coming up here in the next month or two with some new Pride events and stuff like that. So I just thank the city and thank everyone there for encouraging us and being there for us.
Thank you, Tony. All right, we are going into our consent calendar, and we're looking at items three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve consent calendar as amended?
So moved, Taylor.
Second.
Sonic.
All right, would anyone from the public like to discuss this item? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. If you're on the phone, please press star nine. And seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. All right. Item number nine, this is a time where it's community comment. And anyone from the community that would like to address council during this time, please raise your hand. And I will call upon you. If you're on the phone, please press star nine. And this is an opportunity to address anything that is not on the formal agenda. And I'm going to go to David. Please welcome David.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, council. And just want to start by saying thanks to council and everybody who was there for the listening posts. I felt like those have been really, really helpful these last few weeks. And thanks to council and Mims. I think you were the one a few weeks ago who really pushed that together and made the scheduling on that happen really quickly. So thank you for that. You know, I think we've seen pretty broad community support for a cahoots type model for, as we're talking about policing changes, especially from the first listening post. I thought we had pretty broad community support for that. And this support includes a model that does not include police response for calls that are relating to nonviolent offenses. So I think we've seen over these listening posts that not just community support, but also local professionals are supportive of that model. Further, we have a lot of research that supports that model. There's organizations like NAMI and the American Psychiatric Association. And if you saw in the email that I sent you all, for anyone listening in the public, I think it's on page 197 of the very large handout where I have some references and links that show that even CIT International, which is the group that provides the modeling for training our police force, the police force have been holding this model up as sort of the gold standard that shows they give the 40 hours of training for crisis intervention. Even CIT International says that the best practices is to not include police in these types of responses. So as we see such broad support for this, I have to ask, like, what more proof do we need? You know, we have the support, we have the local professionals and the infrastructure who have the experience and the desire to do this type of work. So from my perspective, it seems like a matter of political will to give those local professionals the funding that they need to do this work in an efficient way. Secondly, just to respond to what went through during last meeting, I'm just personally a little bit disappointed with the way council pushed through the proposal for the TRC that didn't have any power. I talked a couple of times in the weeks prior about some of the, some of the research out there from the United Nations and other folks who warned against setting up a TRC that does not have enough power because truth does not always lead to reconciliation. IFR even proposed some language in there that there should be systemic and reparative changes that come as a result of the Commission, and that language was taken out. So I'm not sure why council took that out, and it's disappointing to see that that language was removed. It seems less interested in systemic change that way. And finally, just want to offer support behind what Counselor Thomas proposed at the beginning of September. I think that was the September 1st meeting y'all had. And his ideas for changing, making meaningful change, short investment in traffic infrastructure. You know, Iowa City has a pretty terrible reputation relative to the rest of the nation in disproportionate minority contact. So implementing some of those changes that Counselor Thomas has brought forth, and y'all are considering, I hope, for the December budget proposals that you're talking about for 2021. IFR is fully supportive of this, of these changes, and understanding that if we can create streets that police themselves and traffic infrastructure that polices itself, then we'll have less need for traffic police to be the ones using their discretion to make those stops. And I think we've seen, given the record of disproportionate minority contact, that even after years and years of anti-bias training, that training has obviously failed. It doesn't work for our police force because we still have those very poor records. So this is an example of something that we can be imaginative with, be creative with, and sort of change the system and implement something that doesn't require that police discretion, which has failed us in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. And we're going to go to Missy. Welcome, Missy.
Hi, thank you for having me. I wanted to thank the council for your time and to talk to you all about the Neighborhood Nest Program that I'm a co-chair of. And the nest stands for nurturing every student together safely. And the concept of the Neighborhood Nest was born out of concern of the academic gap widening as the Iowa City Community School District began revealing aspects of their return to learn plan. A group of community members, nonprofits, and representation from the school district came together to address three specific needs: childcare, academic supports, and social emotional well-being, with the intention of each nest focusing on the unique needs of each specific neighborhood. In six short weeks, four pilot nests were set up to coincide with the start of the school year, addressing these needs. Dream City, Four Seas, Open Heartland, and United Action for Youth all opened their pilot programs the first week of school. Since the start of school and our transition hybrid learning, some of our nests have shifted how things looked at the beginning and some of our focus. But we do remain focused on addressing the needs of our most at-risk students and families. We hold weekly meetings with the school district administration and school board members to address the on-the-ground issues that we see daily in our nests and work with them to figure out how to quickly problem-solve these issues. We're working with businesses and city governments, including the city of Iowa City, to address space, funding, and infrastructure. Additionally, we hold informational meetings on how to begin nests and where the need is, which currently is everywhere. We currently have 10 Neighborhood Nests within the Iowa City Community School District with two more hopefully to come online within the next month. We continue to work closely with the Iowa City Community School District Student Family Advocates, the Homeless Liaison, and the Youth and Family Development Coordinator to assess need and are continually looking for volunteers and others to set up their own nests in their own neighborhoods. And I just wanted to take the time to introduce you formally to the Neighborhood Nest concept and to throw it over to my other co-chair, Megan Alter, who was on the call as well, to talk about another aspect.
Thank you, Missy. And Megan, you are next. Welcome.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for your time, and it's wonderful to see all of your faces. So to take up where Missy had left off, we have learned so very much in a really short amount of time. And it's been incredibly productive, but also pretty daunting. Part of our mission now is to figure out ways that municipalities and the various community aspects can come together to help solve for problems that existed pre-COVID. It's just a matter that COVID has revealed a lot of infrastructure issues and everyday problems that are facing our families and our students and that goes beyond the educational system. And really, what Missy and I have been talking about, and along with many other people, is a real recognition that overall, we as a community, not just Iowa City, but writ large, have over-relied on our educational system to do a lot of community work. And so in propping up, in standing up these nests, we have found these issues to be sort of put under the microscope. And so one of the things that we are very committed to is that this was to be a short-term help. Well, COVID isn't going away. We really see this as extending through the year. But then also, what do we do to help continue to put pieces in place for families and students in need? What we have found is that food instability remains huge. How to get food to families, that is honestly out of ball. How to work through the digital divide with different families, whether there are language barriers or simply just a lack of understanding or familiarity with technology. Internet connectivity is a huge issue. We have to have more people who can get access to it. So these are all things that have been highlighted and exacerbated by the current pandemic and the way in which the school system has pretty heroically tried to meet these needs. But it's putting such a strain on a system that wasn't built to do that, to do all of that work. So I'm kind of adding the why to the who, what, where, when to say that what we would very much like to do is to offer the work that we've been doing and kind of the little infrastructure that we have as a way to continue to partner and to think with municipalities about how we can try to create a better community at large and help problem-solve in these ways for these issues that helps the lift be a little more equitable throughout. And that really, I come full circle because what Missy and I and the other nest people have been discussing is that from the get-go, what COVID has revealed is that there's so much inequity. And so we feel very strongly that this is the perfect time to be talking about this and what can we do to collaborate further to help solve for people who have have felt that they do not have a voice or do not have the tools for success. And we would like to partner and to continue to talk with you about ways that we can try to make this a community issue. These multiple issues are community issues and to understand them as such so that we can all work together in the way that the nests have collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? We're going to have Eva followed by Myra. Oh, Eva is no longer with a hand raised. We'll have Eva first, followed by Myra. Okay, Eva has disappeared again.
Hi, I'm here. So can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Hello, everyone. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for hosting this listening session. And really, I would just like to echo what David said, 911 calls. I agree wholeheartedly that with the abundance of support from the community, the academics that are studying this issue and CIT, that the only thing missing does seem to be the political will to sort of take on this challenge of reimagining our system to make it a little bit better. I do feel that our current model is a waste of the utility of our mental health professionals in this town, of which there is an abundance. And it's just logic for a person to try to help the unhoused or those experiencing overdoses or threatening suicide or any of the other various nonviolent issues the police currently responsible for instead of a person with years and years of training and very specific experience helping people in these exact same situations. So I just wanted to voice my support for the Iowa Freedom Riders on that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to go to Myra, followed by Sarah. And everybody's doing so good, keeping their comments between three to five minutes. So just a reminder that is a part of what we ask. All right, welcome, Myra.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. So I just wanted to quickly talk about some of the work that we've also been doing and some of the things that we've noticed during, especially during the pandemic here. So I'm the community organizer at the Center for Worker Justice, and we have seen like a very incredibly increase, a huge increase in the amount of people that are coming to us with different, like, issues. Some, most of them are COVID-related. And we have a lot, a lot of people coming for assistance with rent and utilities. And those are the people that we are, you know, trying to address their needs. And also, the other thing is that a lot of those people, you know, not only have been affected, you know, by COVID in regards to their rent and utilities and all of that, but we do have a lot of people who are currently experiencing wage theft cases. And during the time of COVID, there's still a lot of employers who are very predatory and don't really care that, you know, it's a pretty difficult time for everybody. But we have been working with, like, we still have like five wage theft cases who have come to us, and we are trying to get through those as quickly and as timely as possible. We are also working with meatpacking employees. to be able to address the needs that that they are experiencing at this time. A lot of them, we are dealing with the effects of COVID. And we are trying to, you know, assess, reach this population. As a lot of the times, this population doesn't get reached. And so we are doing a lot of outreach for them. As well as a lot of people who have worked in meatpacking plants have reached out to the Center for Worker Justice. As, you know, during COVID, a lot of the issues were that these plants weren't providing PPE, weren't, you know, meeting the demands that they should be meeting for the safety of their workers. And so a lot of people who were not comfortable going to work because of the pandemic, you know, who filed for unemployment and then were given the unemployment, but then after a couple months denied and told, hey, you actually are not eligible because your employer protested. So now you owe back all this money that we initially had approved you for. And so we've been helping people appeal for those cases. And it is these, a lot of these immigrants and refugees who have come to us with these specific problems. And the process of that, going through all of that, is extremely confusing. So we are, you know, doing our dividing our time between not only like renting utilities and helping with that issues, even though that is a huge, a huge problem for a lot of people and a lot of our membership base, and a lot of people that were not our members, but members of the community who we're also reaching. But also, all of these other like employer wage theft problems that we still need to address. And so we're juggling both of these parts of, you know, COVID and how COVID has affected all of these workers. Not only in workers not being able to pay their utilities, but in the workplace itself. And how COVID has really shown, you know, the predatory practices of a lot of like companies and employers and landlords as well. It's really a lot going on that with us at the center, where we're doing our best with the limited, very limited staff that we have. But yeah, we just wanted to make sure that that was presented, that COVID is affecting all of these different people in so many different ways. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Welcome.
Hi, counsel. I'm Sarah Barron. I'm the Executive Director of the Affordable Housing Coalition. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm mostly coming to you with a thank you. I want to review, I know you're going to review tonight some information about how your eviction prevention funding is going. Just today, I looked up the numbers for Johnson County in the Iowa Finance Authority Eviction Prevention Program. And Johnson County represents fifteen to sixteen percent of the renter households and owner households who have applied for and received funding through the state. And that is despite the fact that we're only five percent of Iowa's population. So we've done a really good job. You've done a really good job. Our partners have done a really good job to get the word out to households about the assistance available, both from the state and the local programs. I know our local partners have been working really hard to make sure that households have this information. We see some success. But we also know that there are many households that are still struggling and need this assistance. And so I wanted to highlight just a couple of things for you. The first is that there will be a landlord summit that's being put together through a number of partners of the Project Better Together Housing subgroup on Thursday, October fourteenth, at, I'm sorry, October fifteenth, at noon. And you can visit our Facebook page or one of the other participants' Facebook pages to get more information about that. The intention is to share information about the rental assistance programs with landlords so that they can both pass that on to their tenants and continue to preserve their income through the pandemic. And I also just wanted to offer you this reminder that housing justice is very much a racial justice issue, as you know, through your discussions. In April, the data that was collected showed that sixty-one percent of Hispanic Americans and forty-four percent of Black Americans said that they or someone in their household had experienced a job or wage loss due to coronavirus, which is a much higher percentage than that of white Americans even. And so as we're thinking about targeting this assistance for rents and mortgage, while we know that many in our community are impacted by it, every step that you take toward keeping people stably housed is also a step towards your racial justice goals. And I want to thank you for your concentrated efforts in keeping people in Johnson County safely housed through the pandemic and beyond. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Seeing no one, we are going to move on to item number ten. And this is amend downtown urban renewal plan. A resolution approving amendment number sixteen to the City University Project One, a renewal plan to add climate change objectives and projects. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And staff.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. As you know, any urban renewal activities undertaken in an urban renewal area must be included in the respective urban renewal plan. Amendment number sixteen to the City University Project One Urban Renewal Area, also known as the Downtown Urban Renewal Area, includes two future projects. One, a redevelopment project on the south side of the one hundred block of East College Street and an energy efficiency incentive program for commercial properties located within that urban renewal area. It is important to note that the amendment to the plan does not constitute the approval of the projects listed within the plan. Rather, it simply affords counsel the opportunity to consider those projects at a later date. And a little background on both. Regarding the redevelopment project, the Tailwind Group developers first presented their project a year ago to the Council Economic Development Committee. And since then, they have made some adjustments to their plans, and they expect to make a final presentation to the Economic Development Committee this fall, which EDC will then consider a recommendation to forward to counsel from there. We anticipate that in the coming weeks or a couple of months or so. Then regarding the energy efficiency incentives, to encourage businesses to make investment, the investments required to improve energy efficiency, the city is creating an urban renewal program designed to offset some of those costs. Applicants would be eligible for up to fifty percent match for eligible energy efficiency improvements, similar to what we set up in the three industrial areas in August or so. And how to pay for each of those? Well, tax increment generated from taxes paid by property owners in the urban renewal areas area would be used for both projects. The commercial users would apply for the funds for their energy efficiency projects, and the projects would be vetted by professionals or contractors in the industry. And then we would enter into agreements with those users for those funds. For the private redevelopment project, they would be required to generate their own TIF increment through the increased valuation on the property to be eligible for TIF rebates. TIF increment is taxes paid by the owner over and above a base value or a beginning taxable value of properties. That project too would be considered at a later date by counsel. I don't think you had any other comments on that amendment to City University Project One Urban Renewal Area, but I'd certainly help answer questions.
I don't hear any questions for you. All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Hearing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And can I get a motion to approve?
Second, Thomas.
All right, I'm gonna, I guess I didn't quite know who actually moved that one.
Pauline and I seconded.
All right, so moved by Thomas, seconded by Taylor.
Either way, yeah.
All right. All right, counsel discussion.
Well, I think this is a natural evolution with our TIF policy now that we've, you know, a climate has become such a critical issue. So I'm really pleased to see that it's incorporated into our TIF policy.
Hearing no other comments. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Calee? Yes. Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number eleven, amend water collection ordinance fiscal year twenty. Ordinance amending Title III City Finances Taxation and Fees, Chapter Four, Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties. Section Three entitled Potable Water Use and Service of the City Code to increase or change water service charges and fees in Iowa City. Iowa and amending Title sixteen entitled Public Works, Chapter Three A entitled General Provisions. Sections Five, Six, and Seven entitled Establishing City Utility Accounts, Deposits Required, Billing and Collection Procedures, Delinquent Accounts, and Discontinuation and Restoration of Service to Make Delinquent Account Collection Fees and Procedures More Equitable and Just. Could I get a motion to give a second consideration?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Taylor.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. Seeing no one, counsel discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Calee?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas? Thomas?
Sorry, yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Item number twelve, taxi companies, number of required vehicles. Ordinance amending Title V entitled Business and License Regulations, Chapter Two, entitled Taxi Cabs to decrease the number of required vehicles from two, from four to two. This is first consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
All right, and presentation by staff.
Hi. So this ordinance is by counsel direction. There was a request from one of the current cab companies to change the minimum requirement for vehicles from four down to two. Counsel had asked for some history, which we discussed at the September fifteenth work session. And with the changes that have kind of evolved over the years with the business renewal process switching to once a year, and then with the TNC companies like Uber and Lyft, the number of pop-up companies, which used to be a concern during like football season, have dropped dramatically. And then with the survey of larger cities showed the majority of them don't have a minimum requirement. So currently, we have two companies, Big Ten, which has two vehicles, which is acceptable due to the mayor's order with the suspension of the requirement of four cabs. And then we have Yellow Cab, which has seventeen vehicles. Happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions. I know we had a great discussion the last time through this item. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one, counsel discussion.
It just seems to me like this is a good way to respond to current circumstances. Circumstances have changed since we had all these pop-ups in previous years. Obviously, if things don't work, that we have the option to change things back again, but it sounds like this will really help at least one company right now.
Yeah, I think it's a great positive step, and given the changes within our community over the years, it's just not during COVID. This seems like the correct response, so I'm gonna support this. Hearing no other comments. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number thirteen, short-term rentals. Ordinance amending Title Seventeen entitled Building and Housing, Chapter Five entitled Housing Code, to provide rental permit requirements for short-term rental properties. This is first consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Mims.
All right, and staff presentation.
Just turn my camera on. This is Eleanor Dale, City Attorney. So this ordinance change is necessary because of state legislation that regulates or prohibits cities from regulating short-term rentals, Airbnbs, et cetera. We can continue to regulate them from a health and safety perspective and a nuisance perspective, but we just can't charge a rental permit fee. So essentially, what this ordinance does is applies all our other health and safety standards that we apply to other rentals and except for the fee.
Any questions for Eleanor? Hearing none. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yeah, yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item fourteen, appointment of police chief. Resolution approving the appointment of Dustin Liston as police chief in Iowa City, Iowa. Could I get a motion to approve? Moved by Thomas, seconded by Mims. And staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This is Jeff Fruin, City Manager. The police chief is one of two positions that I have the authority to select and recommend to the council. Tonight, I'm asking for your approval of that appointment of Dustin Liston. As you know, on February twenty-fourth, former chief Jody Matherly retired from the Iowa City Police Department. And shortly before he did that, we started our recruitment for the new police chief position. The Civil Service Commission approved that recruitment process at their February seventh, twenty twenty, meeting. I'll go through that recruitment process and can certainly speak in more detail about it if you have questions about how we got here tonight. But we took a good time to articulate the type of person that we were looking for in a police chief and advertised that widely to as many groups that we could. We received applications for eighteen, from eighteen individuals by our April thirtieth deadline. I reviewed those along with some other city staff here and chose nine to respond to a written questionnaire that had five questions in it. During that process, we had four candidates withdraw from the process, leaving us five that responded. I selected four of those to advance for further consideration to an interview phase of the process. I was gratified that fifteen people from the community, including both city staff and folks outside of the city staff, agreed to help me interview those four finalists, semifinalists, I should say. And each of the And each of the, each of the four semifinalists had about three hours of interviews with these community members and city staff members. I want to, I think it's really important that I note that the interview panelists were not necessarily asked to endorse or choose a candidate. They were really there to help me help share their perspective with me on the candidates and really help me identify things that I needed to look for as we advanced through the other stages of that process. And I certainly learned a lot from their participation and their viewpoints. And that certainly helped shaped my decision on who to advance to the finalist stage and how to structure that finalist stage and ultimately what issues to really probe into. We didn't have three finalist candidates that were publicly released. They had their resumes and questionnaires posted on our website. They were also in town for the final event, I'm sorry, the final day of events, which included community and station tours, an additional interview. We had a youth panel that I met with the candidates, a police department meet and greet and a public meet and greet that we did out at Mercer Park in the evening. I took all the feedback from those finalist events as well as information from the previous portions of the process. And also had the benefit of background checks at that time, which we had a third party conduct for us during this process. And I'm here tonight with that recommendation of Dustin Liston for your consideration. So I don't take this recommendation lightly. Appointments of department heads, positions, I consider probably to be the most significant responsibility I have because of the level of discretion that each of those individuals has in their areas. So I think it's important that you know that I understand the importance of this selection and that Mr. Liston has my full confidence and my full backing with this recommendation. So a little bit about Mr. Liston, I hope you had a chance to read the memo for a more extensive overview, but he's Iowa native, born and raised in Eldora, Eldora, Iowa, and actually resided in Iowa City and did some lifeguarding for us and interned in our police department while he was going to undergrad at the University of Iowa. He has Bachelor of Arts degrees in psychology and sociology. And after graduation, he joined the El Paso, Texas Police Department where he has served for 22 years. He's risen through the ranks in that department and currently serves as lieutenant and is assigned as the director of the El Paso Fusion Center, which is a multi-agency intelligence hub in El Paso. At the Fusion Center, he's proven to be a very strong collaborator and an excellent communicator. Two of the very skills that we were seeking from the outset of this process. A little bit about the El Paso Police Department to give you some perspective. It's a significantly larger department than we have here in Iowa City. 1,173 sworn officers. We are sworn at 84 right now, so quite a bit bigger department. They also have 299 civilian staff members in that department. They serve over 680,000 residents and over 80% of their residents identify as Hispanic. El Paso is the home to a significant university, much like we have here. In El Paso, they serve the University of Texas, El Paso, which has enrollment over 25,000 students. So a couple of things that stood out to me, certainly a significant difference in department size, a wide variety of experiences that Mr. Liston has gained over his 22 years, but also that experience of serving a diverse community, understanding the outreach and engagement that goes along with that. And his experience with a large higher education institution like we have here in Iowa City. Those that have worked with Mr. Liston describe him as a good listener and a deep and forward thinker, a strong collaborator, who's very highly respected amongst his peers. He has no disciplinary history in his 22 years with the El Paso Police Department and is regarded as having strong morals and ethics that serve as a foundation for all of his actions. Others have described him to me as courteous and empathetic. He's someone that takes strong interested, strong interest in the officers that he supervises. He enjoys and takes seriously the tasks of mentoring young officers and helping them develop professionally throughout their careers. His ability to motivate and fully support his staff while holding them accountable and constantly working to improve upon service delivery are unique skills that are really important for our position here in Iowa City. He is certainly up to the task and understands the challenge ahead of us with your call to accelerate a path towards a more robust community policing model, and he eagerly embraces that challenge with your support. There is, he has significant experience in community policing programs in El Paso, including CIT civilian response programs, which will undoubtedly help shape our efforts here in Iowa City. He has a strong commitment to the principles of procedural justice, which I know he will help permeate throughout our department and improve our collective efforts to consistently serve all persons in a fair and impartial manner. He's prepared to hold our staff accountable when we make mistakes and also lift them up and celebrate their achievements with many successes that we will have under his leadership. I take a great comfort in knowing that he is coming home to Iowa and that he already has a strong stake in this community, and he has a deep passion for Iowa City and the University of Iowa. He's going to really enjoy the support from a strong and talented department that we have here, who are ready to embrace him and what he will bring to this leadership position. I look forward to what the police department will be able to do under his leadership. We have an extremely strong foundation here at the Iowa City Police Department. We have a heck of a lot to be proud of, but we also understand the challenge that we're we're hearing from the community to, again, accelerate that path towards community policing. So it is without hesitation, it's with a lot of excitement and enthusiasm that I ask you for your support in approving Dustin Liston as our next police chief.
All right, any questions for Jeff from councilors? Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Nicholas, welcome.
Hello, counsel. Thank you for listening to me. You'll probably be happy to note that I'm not going to pontificate about housing tonight. However, I hadn't initially intended on saying anything, but I wanted to voice my strong opposition to appointing Mr. Liston as, I mean, I oppose to police in general, but particularly Mr. Liston, given the recent situation and the circumstances that activists have had to deal with in Iowa City over the past few months. Activists have been spied upon, they've been followed after protests, they've been pulled into cars randomly. ICPD has not been behaving responsibly with regards to protecting the civil liberties of political activists in the area. And the reason why it's distressing that Mr. Liston has been recommended by the city manager is precisely because he used to run a fusion center. I don't know if you're familiar with this, but during the Occupy Wall Street movement, fusion centers were actually central in cracking down on civil unrest and on political protest. And more specifically to the point, not the same fusion center that Mr. Liston worked for, but a different fusion center in Texas was actually cited in a 2009 ACLU report for its role in spying on activists. So I have to say that I actually find this recommendation to be galling, given the current circumstances. And Mr. Frue's assertion that somehow this is a good choice, given the situation, to be frankly ridiculous. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Hearing from no one, council discussion.
Well, I would like to thank Jeff and certainly all the community members who participated in the interviews and gave Jeff their input in terms of who they felt, you know, what they felt about each of the candidates to help him in terms of his decision. I know this is not a time that we get in discussion with the public, but I must say, some of the allegations that Nicholas just made are certainly nothing that I have heard or, I guess, would question the validity of some of those in terms of police dragging people into cars in Iowa City. And that disturbs me when we start having these allegations with no real evidence. And I think I would support Jeff's comments that we have, I think, a very good police department here. We have improvements and changes to make. I look forward to having Mr. Liston here as our new police chief to help lead that. And just the additional, I guess, comment that I think we will move forward with those things. And I don't, I do not sense that there is any lack of political will by this council to make those kinds of changes. As referenced earlier tonight in some discussion, but it's simply that we were in a process that will play itself out over time as we get the public input and then have our opportunities to have those discussions as the council. So I think it'll be really nice to get Mr. Liston here. We're going to have our, our goal is to have our preliminary plan by mid-December. He'll be here in January. But certainly, he'll be here to help guide us and work with us as we finish that plan and then start implementing it.
I agree. Nothing about these fusion centers, since certainly there is nothing of that nature in this area and also did not know about or had heard or seen proof that citizens were being dragged into cars, et cetera. I think Chief Matherly left some very big shoes to fill. But I think from the interview process and the narrowing down, it sounds like Mr. Liston will be a good fit for this community, and I look forward to working with him.
So I said it on the youth panel, and a lot of the youth who were on there were very enthusiastic about him. I just wanted to add a little bit of perspective, which is El Paso, it does not just have a very, a very high Hispanic population. It is a border city. It borders on Ciudad Juarez in Mexico, which has one of the highest crime rates and murder rates in Mexico, yet El Paso, however they manage it, right across the border, is an incredibly safe place, but there are a lot of challenges to deal, to deal with there. And it would seem like they are, they are incredibly large in scale compared to what we have to deal with here, which are very important, but I'm confident that if someone is capable of dealing with the enormous challenges presented by that geographic location, that he can deal with our issues here.
I just want to thank everyone who participated in this process. You know, as Jeff described it, it was a very intensive process with lots of steps involved with it, engaging all aspects of our community. So, you know, it certainly lends itself to feeling comfortable that, you know, the decision Jeff made has been vetted throughout the community. And it seems like an opportune time. You know, we are going through this evaluation of how we can make positive changes to our police department. So making the change at this moment seems opportune and a great opportunity for a new police chief to come on board.
Hey, I want to support the appointment of Dustin Liston. When we had the opportunity, some of us councilors, to meet with the three finalists, what really struck me about Mr. Liston was his understanding of where we were as a community, kind of after this summer, and being very understanding of the council's will and our interest in, as John was saying, to really embrace community policing and our commitment in terms of restructuring the police. So I think he's coming in at a very good moment with eyes wide open and had very insightful and intelligent responses to our questions and certainly, I think, gets it when, when we talk about how Iowa City is positioned and where we want to go. So thank you, Jeff, for that recommendation.
This role is so critical. We're talking about the police chief and given the times that we're in as a community, Iowa City specific, I think it's critical that whoever we appoint as our police chief gets vetted from the community. And council also ensures that our position on how we want our police to look like, what our community want our police to look like, is expressed in who we appoint as a police chief. And I am confident that Dustin Liston is that individual. And so thanks to our city manager, Jeff Frue, who did, who did some hard work. And he wasn't alone in, in making this decision. I really believe that our public, the staff that came together to kind of go through the applications. I know that our city attorney was a part of that process. As well as the initial group of people that were looking at the candidates and making suggestions. When I heard that the youth were a part of this process, that, that was, for me, really important to know that their voices were heard and had opportunity to be at the table. So I am 100% supporting Dustin Liston as police chief. And I'll tell you that I would have no issue if I had one moment or to think that he would not serve our city well. I would have no issue of not making this recommendation and not voting for this tonight. So I am supporting this appointment and yeah, looking forward to Dustin Liston being a part here if it sounds like he's gonna get appointed once we finish with our roll call. Hearing no other comments? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, number 15, council appointments. 15A is going to be Human Rights Commission. One vacancy to fill, an unexpired term plus a three-year term upon appointment through December 31st, 2023. And council discussion. I do want to make mention.
Paulie Marshall? Oh, you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Yes, I was going to just make mention that, if I understand correctly, this is a a male-required opening?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah, it's a male-required opening. And there are 42 applicants total. I didn't, I didn't separate them out by male and female. I think, Mayor Protim, I think you just mentioned.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yep, so it's a.
I wasn't paying attention. It's a male requirement. I thought like it doesn't matter.
Yes, yes. I, you know, I, I did want to, as I looked at the, at the current makeup of this commission, one of the things that is lacking, in my opinion, is the mental health and disability world. I looked, one, I would like to say that we had a lot of good applicants. I know that Kevin Rivera, I really liked his application and what he had to put forth. But as I looked at what we have on the current makeup of the count of this commission, and we're talking about all the things with the policing going towards community policing, we don't have anyone on here that really service our mental health and disabilities world. I will like to say this before I even make this recommendation. Many of you know Roger Lucella, who was over the MYEP. He's the executive director of MYEP. He's a great friend of mine, but I want to make that known that he is a friend, but, but this recommendation does not come with that relationship. Many of us have, you know, friendships or whatever with many people that are applicants here, but. But I wanted to make that recommendation because I do see that that is something that is lacking on our commission. And so I would like council to consider Roger Lucella as a commissioner.
I would second that.
And I was going to make the same recommendation, Mr. Mayor, for a variety of reasons, because of his experience with NYEP and for the work that he's done also raising women of color in this community. So I think he has tremendous experience to bring to this.
I agree with all those things you're saying. And I do agree with Mayor that each of the applicants would be well-suited in their own rights to serve on the Human Rights Commission. But it's been some time since we've had a person that required a wheelchair apply or even be appointed to one of our boards or commissions. And I believe that the Human Rights Commission could benefit from such a member of our community and that it would be a good fit and they would serve well on the HRC. And so for that reason, I was interested in Robert Malsberry.
Yeah, I was, I was too. I think having representation on the HRC with a person with disabilities would benefit the commission. I think we all seem to understand things best, or at least there's more likely to understand things best when we have some direct experience with it. And I do feel in Iowa City are, the issues associated with persons with disabilities could have, could benefit from a stronger voice. And I think he may help provide that.
We have two recommendations so far on the floor. Robert Malsberry and Roger Lucella.
I would just say, Mayor, as other counselors have noted, it's just tremendous to have so many applicants and so many qualified applicants. I don't know what we did differently with this particular opening. I saw a lot of posts about it in different places, but we obviously did something right to get people really fired up about it, which is fantastic. I think both, both of the individuals who are nominated have very good qualities and qualifications for the commission. I had come in thinking that Roger Lucella would be a good fit for the commission, just given some of the items that you had mentioned. Mayor, also just knowing his background, so I think that's where I would lend my support, knowing him and his involvement in the community. And again, just think we have a ton of qualified applicants and really grateful that people are wanting to be involved.
I recommend the same version, also Roger Lucella, as Laura and the mayor stated.
So we have four for Roger Lucella and two for Robert Malsberry. So we do have the majority for Roger Lucella. Do we want to continue discussion on this item at all? The one thing I did want to just make mention is related to how we, this process, how it's not easy for any of us to look through 42 applicants. And of course, this is a male opening. You know, as I was looking at, because I was going through and I was looking at a few of them, and I did mention Kevin Rivera as I was looking at his application. And so I saw that we had, as far as occupations, already on the commission, a licensed psychologist. And I wasn't exactly sure what the clinical research associate was related to. But we try to mix up the occupations a little bit as well, so that we have some diversity here from different points of view. But those individuals that did apply, we never know when we have other openings on the Human Rights Commission, which we do have two vacancies to fill coming up, which I'll mention here in a little bit. So there will be more opportunities for openings on the Human Rights Commission in the near future. We also have other boards and commissions that if people are interested in applying for, we would welcome you to some of those as well. Any other comments from council? Hearing none, it sounds like Roger Lucella, we're going to appoint to the Human Rights Commission.
Tomo.
Mumbai Saleh.
Second.
Take it by Memes is what I think I heard. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Memes.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 16, announcement of vacancies. New applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission, nine vacancies, term effective upon appointment through June 30th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1st through December 31st, 2025. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1st through December 31st, 2025. Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. Climate Action Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st through, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill a four-year term, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2024. Public Art Advisory Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. Item number 17, announcements of vacancies previous. Public Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM October 27th, 2020. Planning and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM October 13th, 2020. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are at item number 18, and this is Ryan Longnecker. I think I saw you.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mayor. Nothing really to update tonight. I just wanted to express our support again for students to be practicing social distancing measures and being safe as the bars reopen. And to please make sure that you're wearing your masks, not engaging in large group activity. As we saw after the bars closed, our numbers went down drastically after we had a major outbreak at the beginning of school. And I think we'd all like to keep it that way. So please be practicing those safety measures and have a good rest of the semester. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, city council information now is an opportunity for us to, I guess we can do anything at this point, what we would have done at work session, as well as what we normally do here with updating the community on events that we've attended and other information.
I just have an upcoming event to mention and announce. The weekend of October 17th and 18th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, weather permitting, will be the second repair weekend to assist the residents of the Forest View Mobile Home Park. As you all might remember, as long ago as four years now, developers announced plans to build new affordable housing for the residents of Forest View. However, this development has yet to happen. And in the meantime, these residents have continued to live in their mobile homes, many of which are in urgent need of repairs in order to make it through yet another winter. This repair weekend is a joint project partnering the local carpenters union, the Iowa State Building and Construction Trades Council, the city of Iowa City, thank you, city, Forest View Tenants Association, and Center for Workers' Justice. But I would especially like to thank Royce Peterson and his union carpenters, Local 1260, for their major role with this project. If anyone would like to help out that weekend, it would be appreciated. No construction skills are necessary. They'll find something for you to do. You can just meet up out there at Forest View. Thanks.
Great.
I'd like to piggyback off of what Ryan said. The bars are reopening. Please be safe. Please wear face covering. Please distance socially. Please, please do whatever you need to do to keep yourself and our community safe right now. Iowa's hospitalization, numbers hospitalizations are the highest they have ever been for COVID. They're up 65% just since September 20th. So we cannot be complacent. We need to, we need everyone to keep our numbers reasonable here in Johnson County. And on a more upbeat note, please vote. Early voting has started. There is drive-through voting that the Johnson County Auditor's Office has in the parking lot next, in the parking structure next to the Health and Human Services Building. And there are drop boxes at the admin building if you want to drop ballots there. Please vote.
Please, if you can, attend the live meeting for the Center for Workers' Justice at 12 noon on Friday. So you can hear how people struggle during this time. And how the Center for Workers' Justice is being, doing amazing job of helping people of this community, especially people of color and immigrants. It's only two staff. Thank you.
I'll just quickly mention, on the subject of transportation, which we talked about earlier tonight, on the 23rd of September at our MPOJC meeting, we discussed the the plan as it stands now for providing light rail service between downtown Iowa City and North Liberty. And it was a pretty interesting presentation. It certainly, I think, at least my impression was, is the response to it was receptive. It is, as it was explained in the presentation, a unique opportunity because this rail line is whole. Not much needs to be done in order to make it happen. And Crandick is interested in its transformation to a passenger rail system, which is also not always the case. So it's an interesting opportunity. Of course, it costs, as I recall, somewhere in the $40 million range, I think, was the number, something like that, which was also explained for what we would be getting. You know, I think about some of our projects that, you know, we approve routinely for, say, the American Legion Extension out to Taft Road. I think that's like a $10 million project, something like that. So in relative terms, for a major piece of public transit infrastructure, the cost seems pretty reasonable. So anyway, there is going to be an effort to try to, to expand on the messaging on this particular project and make it more publicly known as we try to move forward and see what the reception is to the concept.
I wanted to just make mention that this weekend, on Saturday, there was the celebration of the 30th Johnson County ADA Celebration that took place. And I know that Councilor Burgess was also in attendance. It was a great celebration of just hearing from locals and some throughout our state about all of the work that people that have been working towards making our community better for those with disabilities. It was just a great opportunity to be a part of that, so wanted to mention that today. The other thing that I will mention is that tomorrow I get an opportunity to be in a Zoom meeting with our assistant, wait, our city manager assistant, Rachel. We're going to be a part of the Mayor's Innovation Project. There is a live showcase that's going to be with other mayors across the states. And so we're going to be a part of that tomorrow at 3:00 PM. And so I'll get an opportunity to hang out with Rachel for a little bit. So that's all I wanted to mention today.
I would just, we had one of our public input sessions last night. Counselor Thomas and Taylor were there with me. We were at Chauncey's. The primary focus of that one was on the homeless population. And so we had a good, reasonable participation from the community, given that our weather is, it was cooler last night than tonight, I think, although it wasn't bad last night. So it was a good opportunity to hear from people and get some input and questions. And so I'm glad to see that we've got those almost wrapped up as our weather cools up here. And we'll be interested to see some of the compiled data and ideas come from those sessions.
Just to piggyback off of that, I was just going to remind folks that the last of our series of listening posts is this Thursday, October 8th, at 5:30 PM at Dream City, focusing on youth engagement. As we talk about community policing, we'll take, we'll listen to input from the public on any topic, but that is kind of the theme. The listening posts so far, I think, have been very well-attended and well-received, and we're getting a lot of great information. So really appreciate people participating in that. The UNESCO City of Literature Book Festival is happening virtually now through October 16th. So I encourage people to look online at the City of Literature's website or Facebook for programming that's happening with that. And then just wanted to plug the City of Iowa City's Climate Ambassador Program. For, you may have seen that online as well. But there are educational programs to encourage folks to sign up to be a climate ambassador, a series of educational trainings to inform folks on how to be better climate advocates in their own actions and in the community, and then to kind of be an ambassador to others for those acts as well. So that is happening later this month and hope people sign up for that.
All right, any other comments by counselors? Well, we'll be back, we're going to go back into our work session in a little bit. So, all right, from our city manager, any comments from you?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Our assistant city manager, Ashley.
Councilor Burgess mentioned the ambassador program. I'm glad she did. Another program that's pretty new, we just put out a press release yesterday about our new tree planting program called Root for Trees. Got the opportunity to talk with the mayor this afternoon on a Community Connection episode. And so people can look for that for more information, or they can go to our website, icgov.org/root, the number four, trees. We've already got a very healthy interest in the program, lots of applications to get a voucher for a discounted tree. The final thing I'll mention is, of course, the United States Census. They are still counting people in our community. And if, at all, at this point, people have not responded, it is critical that they do so. We very much appreciate taking five minutes to finish the census. So go to my2020census.gov. Thanks.
Right. Our city attorney, Eleanor.
Nothing from Mayor, Mayor. Thank you.
And our city clerk.
Nothing, thank you.
All right, could I get a motion to adjourn? All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn if nothing more? We're going to, we're going to adjourn to our work session. Moved by Weiner.
Seconded Taylor.
Seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are at the work session. Return it to the work session.